Meeting has come to order, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pro call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I'm going to do the journal.
I'm going to do the journal of the meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, I say that motion carries. Journal is approved. We have no bid openings, muted communications.
Mr. Chair, there are tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, third district.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, fourth district.
Receiving file, and that will be the order.
Item number three, sixth district.
Receiving file.
That will be the order.
Mr. Chair, we have nothing under road and bridge matters, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three.
Same motion through item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, third district.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate, excuse me, legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Kirkwood.
So ordered.
Item number seven, fourth district.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, fifth district.
Same motion through item number nine.
So ordered.
Item number ten.
Receive file and appointments be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, I say that motion carries. Addons, please.
Under other communications, item number one.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. County Executive?
Yes, this evening, I'd like to talk about something that we've been doing now for a few weeks, and I wanted to commend our employees in St. Louis County for their hard work and their generosity. St. Louis County, the St. Louis County employee coat drive began in earnest this year, and it was the result of our education liaison, Barbara Fraser, contacting quite literally every school district in the county, and in conjunction with our community empowerment division, Ethel Bindum, asked our various school districts how we could be helpful in St. Louis County. And really, the resounding response was that the county could help by hosting a coat drive for children. The superintendents noted that in some of our coldest winter months, that some children go without coats, and in many cases, it hinders them from actually attending school because they have to stand outside for the bus in many cases, and they simply just don't have coats. So we began collections of new and gently-used coats of all sizes, and this started on October thirty-first and ended on November tenth. Bins were stationed at all county departments and satellite offices, and we should be very proud in St. Louis County. We gathered eight hundred coats, as well as two thousand dollars in donations, with a large donation from Royal Banks. And these coats will go to, and have been going to, four school districts: Ferguson Florissant, Hazelwood, Normandy, and Hancock Place. And these districts were chosen based on requests from superintendents and rates of poverty. School administrators have distributed and will distribute the coats as are needed to the various students, as the weather now begins to turn cold. And I will say that donations came from every single department of county government, and we have a lot to be proud of in St. Louis County. And I thank all the employees who donated and all the employees who worked on it. They really made a great difference in the lives of the students, and I think it's really important. So, thank you.
Thank you. County Executive? No reports or special committees, we'll move to public forum.
We have eleven speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please keep your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Our speaker is Darrell Ross, and he will be followed by Bill Hagan.
My name is Darrell Ross. I'm currently president of the Transportation Museum Association. I didn't have any particularly set speech to give. I think most of you have received some of the fact sheets of what the issues are and what the true information is, as far as what we're attempting to do and working with the county for the good of all: county, the TMA, and the community. I'm really here to answer any questions if these discussions pursue, answer any questions if the discussions pursue. So, please feel free, if anyone has any questions as this proceeds, I'll be here to answer.
I might direct it to Colleen. She can probably answer some questions, or state something that she's going to be doing.
Right, I just want to thank you for coming today, and I think there are several people who want to speak on this matter. We will be having a committee of the whole meeting on it, so everybody will have ample time to review and comment on the proposal.
Good.
And I appreciate you all being there as well, so...
I think you're, thank you for your patience with us. We've met a couple times already, and Gary's done some excellent work, I think, in communicating the true facts.
Right, and I think people are anxious to hear what the proposal is. So, there will be a committee of the whole meeting, and we'll be requesting that, I guess, sometime in the near future here. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing will be voted on by this council until Colleen has her committee of the whole meeting, and so the legislation will show roughly what we'll be proposing, and then she'll have the committee of the whole.
Public comment.
I'm prepared to stay.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you.
In the future, we're going to need your resources.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Hagan, followed by Catherine Dockery. And, Mr. Chair, if we could ask Mr. Hagan to spell his last name for me?
It should be H-E-G-E-R. It should be Hager.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Bill Hager. I'm a resident of Rock Hill, fifteen thirty-three North Berry Road. I came here tonight to speak about the proposed sale of the Museum of Transport and transfer back to the Transport Museum Association. I currently work as a trolley volunteer out at the Museum of Transport, have been doing so for twenty years. I'm mainly here tonight because I'd like to see this continue. I do believe that what is being proposed would help in some respects. It would certainly relieve a lot of bureaucracy that currently goes on at the museum, and I think would help in some respects, but I do have my concerns. One that I have heard echoed from some of my coworkers is what's going to happen to workers' compensation for the volunteers. Couple of them have already stated they will not volunteer out there unless there is still workers' compensation available. I'm also very much concerned about how there seems to really be two museums of transport when you go out there. There is the top of the hill and the bottom of the hill. I tend to dwell on the top of the hill. The Transport Museum Association tends to dwell on the bottom. I've been upset over the years that at times, the TMA only seems to care about two things out there: their amusement park train and the creation station, and those dwell at the bottom of the hill. The rest of the collection that dwells at the top has been frequently neglected and in some cases forgotten. There were some people that visited the Museum of Transport, and the people at the Earthline Center neglected to tell them there was even a museum at the top of the hill. They thought everything was at the bottom of the hill. Of course, the fact that the tram was taken out that took people to the top of the hill makes it a little bit more difficult to get up there. Yes, they did put in a series of switchbacks, but my octogenarian parents can't get up them. I've also been upset about the erosion of the collection. Three diesel locomotives were scrapped. I personally know two of the people responsible for getting one of them, and they weren't happy to see it destroyed. I was upset about the Y-6B being loaned to Roanoke, Virginia. It is my knowledge that Roanoke spent over two million dollars to house this locomotive, and I doubt if it's ever coming back. I was also upset when a second Philadelphia streetcar that is identical to one that I run was disposed of by the museum that was supposed to be a source of spare parts for the one I operate. Shortly after it was disposed of, the motor generator set went out in the one that I have, and we had to stop running the car. And believe me, motor generator sets are not easy to find today because St. Louis car's been out of business for over forty years. I am also concerned about some other things, about the way some things have been planted out there that hinder people's ability to view the exhibits. One person complained that he wanted to photograph a locomotive, but somebody put trees in front of it. He said, "If I want to photograph trees, I'll go to the Botanical Garden." And somebody planted some type of flower next to my streetcar stop that attracted bumblebees. Last thing we need to be, have happen is get stung by a lawsuit. So, in conclusion, if some of these questions are answered and can be solved, I will be patient, but I think these concerns do need to be raised. They are an ongoing concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next speaker is Catherine Dockery, followed by Lindsey Armstrong.
Good evening, thanks for having me today. Catherine Dockery, four thirty-six North Sappington Road, Unit C in Glendale. I appreciate your guys' comments about the interest in holding a public session or a public hearing regarding the Museum of Transportation. We have, so I work for the Open Space Council, which is a nonprofit here in St. Louis that's worked for over fifty-one years to help build the St. Louis County Parks System, along with many other park systems in the region. I'm here today partially because I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I did read the information that came out of it, and it wasn't very clear what the plan was. It was a little concerning to us, because many of you remember, folks who are with me today remember filling this council hall just a few years ago with the discussion of the sale and transfer of public parkland. Many of you remember that lots of citizens were very concerned about that, and I think there's, it's still in the back of our minds. I still hear from people. So when this came up, you know, that was the first question people wanted to know from me, is this, you know, is this selling off parkland to try and pay for something else? So I think people, you know, we saw last week with the November election that eighty-two percent of Missourians voted to support state park funding, and we know here in St. Louis those numbers were very high. So people love their parks, and they want to see them for the next generations. So I think we want to have some clarification about what exactly the plan is, how much of the land you're planning to transfer, or perhaps have TMA manage. I don't think that our organization, or many of the conservation and environmental groups have a concern about TMA managing the museum. I don't think that's really where our concern lies. It's really with the land itself and ensuring that it remains as a public park. Taxpayers have supported it since nineteen eighty-four for over thirty years and have put money into it, and I think that, you know, they deserve the opportunity to speak to keeping that public parkland for the next generation. I also wanted to bring up, and I asked for your consideration, of considering modeling this agreement after the Frank Lloyd Wright Museum in Kirkwood in Ebsworth Park. That is a very similar situation, where there's a Friends group, a museum group, that currently manages and operates the museum in a St. Louis County park. They have a long-term lease, and I think it's at least worth exploring that option so that this property can continue to be owned and managed holistically, the eighty acres plus the forty-nine acres where the museum is together as a parkland.
Three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine.
Next speaker is Lindsey Armstrong, followed by Greg Zirker.
Hello, my name is Lindsey Armstrong. I live at forty-two oh one Wyoming Street in St. Louis City. Thank you for letting me speak here today. I am coming up about the park in Kirkwood that is currently on the docket to be sold to private hands. My biggest concern, excuse me, my biggest concern is that public lands that have been funded by taxpayer dollars, our dollars, are being slyly sold to private corporations. And that's not a big deal, because I know that there is a stipulation, or I've heard that there's a stipulation, that this is supposed to be a park. My biggest concern is that the public has not been savvy, or nobody has been, has told us what the stipulations are. So I ask you, and I ask whoever is in charge of doing this, to give this more time, release the information, and let the public at least know what's going on, because we have spent much of our dollars to this park.
Let me just reiterate, reiterate. We are not doing anything until the public is engaged in what we're doing here, just so you know. We're not voting on anything, okay? I just want to let everybody know.
I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for letting me speak up here.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Next speaker is Greg Zirker, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Yes, my name is Gregory Zirker, and I live at one zero zero two three Schusler Road, which is directly across from the proposed entrance for the Pulte PC thirty-five dash sixteen. And I would like to talk about the entrance first. Matt, last time we were here, he said he would like to make it just like Arbor Knoll, considering Arbor Knoll's a model. But Arbor Knoll is wider than it needs to be at the entrance, because there's a monolith in the middle. The monolith needs to be at the side, far side of the road, not in the middle of the road. It makes it very difficult for fire trucks to turn in and out. It makes it difficult for moving trucks and other trucks to turn in and out. And it makes the street wider than it needs to be, which increases runoff, and also cost. So Matt should be very happy that I mentioned this. The other part on the entrance, when people drive onto my property and mash my grass down and leave nice ruts, am I liable for that, or is Pulte going to be liable for that, or the organization for the subdivision? And that will happen. It happens now when people just veer off the roads, and it gets, and that ground stays pretty soggy for a long time, and the ruts get quite deep. The last thing, oh yeah. If we put the monolith advertising the subdivision at the far side of the road, it can be turned at a ninety-degree angle, and you don't have to have this gigantic light shining on it to lighten it up. So the lighting that reflects back to my property can be minimized, if not eliminated. And the second object, right, I want to talk about is the retention pond adjacent to Schusler. That's on the north side of the development, which collects water from approximately one and a half to two acres. And on that retention pond, it's unclear. I talked with Jason Peterin of MSD, and he said he didn't have a design yet on whether it will be a wet retention pond or a dry retention pond. From talking with and looking at it, it looks, it appears that it would be a wet retention pond, which means it's going to have water in it all the time, which means mosquito be a breeding ground. And so, don't have any clarity on that one yet, but Jason Peterin said it has to be decided, and details have to be submitted to them before he can put a, issue a construction permit, or before they can get a construction permit. So, that's some unresolved things. And that existing retention pond, the way it's proposed, is an extremely ugly eyesore. I mean, it's concrete, vertical walls, and the other, my property looks down on it because I'm elevated.
Three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gregory.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Matt Siegel.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. First, the recent shooting at the Wellston MetroLink Station again points out how dangerous it can be to ride a MetroLink or even be at a MetroLink station, or something like forty shots fired. Elliot Davis did another story on MetroLink's safety problems last night. Just what is going on with MetroLink's security should be a concern of this council, but it never is. Mr. O'Meara, you said the council would have a meeting regarding Metro, but there has never been one scheduled. When Steve Stanger ran for county executive, he promised a top-to-bottom forensic audit of county government and implied it was fine to all kinds of wasteful spending. It was to be done in the first one hundred days. The preliminary report came out last year on December thirtieth, and the rest was to be completed by November twentieth, but we still haven't seen it. The hundred days has now stretched to nearly two years. I am again questioning the contract with Brown Smith Wallace for up to one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to audit the health department's HIPAA compliance. The health director, Dr. Faisal Khan, refuses to answer questions about the audit. Proposition P sales tax is on the agenda, and I think it's a bad idea. The sales tax rate would go to over ten percent in some areas. It will only give more people and businesses a reason to leave St. Louis County. The westward counties have grown while the St. Louis County population stagnates. St. Louis County is in competition for residents and business and is having a difficult time with both. A big sales tax hike would only cause more harm to retailers. Many have already closed, and many others are having a tough time. Sales tax hike could be the final nail for many. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Matt Siegel, followed by David Skare.
Matt Siegel, sixteen three oh five Swingley Woods Road, representing Pulte Homes of St. Louis, county executive chairman, county council. Thank you for having me. Just here to answer any questions that we have as it relates to our pending application, just as a response to the speaker that just spoke. Like any development, upon approval of zoning, we will submit our plans to MSD and comply with MSD one hundred percent prior to being issued any further permits.
No questions here. You may, outside this chamber, you may answer Mr. Zirker's questions that he has.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is David Skare, followed by Frank Canetto.
My name is David Skare. I live at one oh one oh seven Schusler Road. I'm speaking today. Thank you for my, for your time, Honorary Council Members. I'm a resource soil scientist for U.S. Department of Agriculture. This is the third time that this proposal on this property has come to fruition. This time, they have gone down to twenty-one homes, trying to satisfy a non-zoning change. Yet, the character of the neighborhood, and we've come to you with petitions twice already, has no lots less than one acre, and many lots of three acres up to ten acres on Schusler Road. There are several, I sent an email to all of you today, there are several portions of the zoning, the county zoning ordinance, that'll be violated if this is passed, number one. I'm going to send you, and I have a copy here of a map I put together, with fifteen one-acre homes. If you put twenty-one six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar houses on this piece of property, you're going to end up with thirteen thousand, sixteen, thirteen million six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in net revenue to the developer. If you put fifteen million-dollar homes on this property, you're going to look at fifteen million dollars revenue. Now, some people may say that you can't sell million-dollar homes. I hope you realize, and no more than that. There's one development down the street, which was nine acres. They put seven million-dollar homes at Arbor Knoll, and they sold within two years, because everything that's been built in this neighborhood has been almost in the million-dollar home range. It is a good neighborhood. There's Gerber Acres right down the street, where they put in three-acre lots. This is a nineteen ninety-five photo. They put in three, or five, three-acre lots. They sold them within two years, since nineteen ninety-five. I mean, I don't think that the council is doing justice to the people of this neighborhood by passing this proposal. And I want to submit these documents to you today, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions about environmental things that I think. I also, since I have another twenty-seven seconds, I'd also like to ask that you consider the fact that making a decision without a lot of the facts put before you, and waiting, and passing this on to planning, planning and zoning thing, without having MSD response, without having highway response, without, without safety responses from a lot of the other entities that should do this, that should all come before it's put before you, so you know what the professionals that are involved in this decision-making are thinking, you know, as far as the facts.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Next speaker is Frank Canetto, followed by Kim Cutterback.
My name is Frank Canetto. I live at eighteen thirty Ridgeview Circle Drive. I'm a resident of St. Louis County, obviously, in District Three. I'm also a member of the Transport Museum Association Board of Directors. I support the transfer of ownership of the Museum of Transportation back to the original owner, the Transport Museum Association. At the Transport Museum Association, we're committed to the residents of St. Louis County. Ninety-four percent of our board members, ninety-three percent of our staff, and eighty-two percent of our membership reside in St. Louis County. We're committed stakeholders to the museum and the community in which we live. We're grateful to St. Louis County for the past commitment they've made to support the museum. We understand St. Louis County has limited resources. We further understand the desires of the Park and Recreation Department to focus its efforts on parks, recreation, and open space. We welcome the opportunity to preserve the museum for generations to come. As a board member, I can assure you, we're a hundred percent committed to this effort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank.
Next speaker is Kim Cutterback, followed by Ron Zitniak.
My name is Kim Cutterback. I live at eight nine, eight nine zero seven Cardinal Terrace in Brentwood. I'd like to thank you for letting us speak today, and I'm glad to hear that the topic of the Museum of Transportation is not going to be voted on today. I was a little worried about that, so. Some of the points that I was going to bring up have already been raised, but I think that I would like to make sure that you take into account that this is parkland. It's been paid millions of dollars by taxpayers over the years, and we really need to get that money back out, and we need to make sure that this stays parkland in perpetuity. So whether it's transferred to the Transportation Museum Association, or it stays parkland, I think we need to make sure there's some guarantee this is not going to be sold to developers in the future, because that would, I mean, I have no words for what that would be, but that, I mean, that would just really be a terrible thing, so. And I want to make sure that you understand that park, parkgoers and park supporters and conservation supporters vote in large numbers. The fact that every conservation measure that's come up over the last at least decade has passed in, like, pretty large numbers. The last one, the Parks and Soils, was eighty-two percent. We had the Prop P for the Green, Gray Rivers Greenway and the Arch, that passed by pretty large numbers. So those people vote, Charlie Dooley will tell you that they vote, so, you know, please just make sure that we're protecting the parkland. It's just been a trend over the last few years that parkland seems to be expendable. So I, you know, this is an important part of St. Louis County. There's a lot of people in a lot of cities that really envy what we have here, and we'd like to make sure that it stays that way. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim.
Final speaker this evening is Ron Zitniak.
My name is Ron Zitniak. I live at one two nine four four Meadow Hill Lane, six three one two eight. And I'm going to, thank you first of all for allowing the time for us to present our case against the Pulte project down on Schusler Road. First of all, as they propose it, it goes against the zoning in that it does not reflect the character of all of the houses that are on the Schusler Road corridor. What they've done is taken the zoning and twisted around with a PEU to cluster those twenty-one houses in the middle of the property on land of a third to a half an acre, and using the concept of greenery and green space all around to sell it. This is out of character from the R-one zoning of one house, one acre, in which the PEU is being twisted on. And I think the important word in there is the environment. What they're... What they're proposing is to attack the environment with massive land movement, massive digging, and the possibility of blasting on the table in an area which is not suitable for that type of activity. I recommend that you reject it and go along with what Mr. Skare said in considering the original zoning, 1 house, 1 acre, 15 houses, done properly within the confines and contours of the land itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Introduction to bills.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept the grant of up to $1,500 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Juvenile Justice Regional Education Initiative program of the family court, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance authorizing the Director of Transportation to issue special use permits to Missouri American Water Company for antenna support structures and designated portions of public roads and rights of way. Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance authorizing the Director of Transportation to issue special, special use permits to Missouri Network Utility Transport for antenna support structures and designated portions of public roads and rights of way. Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance amending ordinance number 25,211 by repealing and reenacting Section 3 pertaining to a contract and renewals with St. Louis University for healthcare providers for patients in two county facilities. Bill number 271, and ordinance introduced by Council, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance amending ordinance number 25,668 by repealing and reenacting Section 3 pertaining to a contract and renewals with Maxim Physician Resources LLC for provision of physician services at county health centers. Bill number 272, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the St. Louis County Police Association, Patrón Order of Police Lodge 111 pertaining to collective bargaining rights of certain county employees. Bill number 273, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a lease agreement with Blue Fuse Soccer Club for lease of acreage in Creve Court Park and for construction of a pertinent facility. Bill number 274, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $3 million from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for support of unanticipated overtime and fringe benefits for the police department. Bill number 275, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance amending Title 12 St. Louis County Revised Ordinance as 1974's amended traffic code by enacting and adding one provision to Schedule 4 and one provision to Schedule 9. Bill number 276, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance providing for the vacation of a portion of Toby Avenue right-of-way and a 20-foot-wide alley right-of-way in Revoy Terrace subdivision, petitioner Afton Plaza JV LLC. Bill number 277, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract for conveyance of the real and personal property comprising the Museum of Transportation to the Transport Museum Association for operation of said museum and authorizing execution of related deeds and other instruments. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Mr. Chair, and Bill number 277 is the one that I wanted to send to the committee of the whole.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number 257, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of Bill number 257.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Bill number 257 is perfected.
Bill number 258, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of Bill number 258.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 258 is perfected.
Bill number 259, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of Bill number 259.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 259 is perfected.
Bill number 260, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect Bill number 260. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 260 is perfected.
Bill number 261, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of Bill number 261.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 261 is perfected.
Bill number 262, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I'd like to move to perfect Bill number 262. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 262 is perfected.
Bill number 263, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect Bill number 263. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 263 is perfected.
Bill number 264, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of Bill number 264.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 264 is perfected.
Bill number 265, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of Bill number 265.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 265 is perfected.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold Bill 116.
Your order.
Bill number 254, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for final passage. Bill number 254.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 254, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 254 is finally passed.
Bill number 255, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill 255.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 255, there are 6 ayes and 1 absent.
Bill number 255 is finally passed.
Bill number 256, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Take it up, move for final passage. Bill number 256.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
No.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 256, there are 4 ayes, 2 noes, and 1 absent.
Bill number 256 is finally passed.
We have nothing under resolutions this evening, Mr. Chair, or this afternoon, Mr. Chair. Move on to unfinished business under item number 1, 4th District.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 2, 7th District.
Please drop from the order of business.
And that will be the order.
And under new business, Mr. Chair, we have one prepared order this evening.
I move adoption of order number 1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Order number 1 is adopted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving, a safe one if you're traveling. Put that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. We are adjourned.[1788.11][1788.11][music]